Welcome to Corpus Christi and to our regular board meeting of Tuesday, April 19th. We call the meeting to order with an opening prayer from our student trustee, Jackson Brown.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. In honor of Aboriginal Education Awareness Month, let us pray to Saint Catterie Tecca Quittha for her intercession before God. Saint Catterie Tecca Quittha, our elder sister in the Lord, discreetly you watch over us. May your love for Jesus and Mary inspire in us words and deeds of friendship, of forgiveness, and of reconciliation. Pray that God will give us the courage, the boldness, and the strength to help to build a world of justice and peace among ourselves and among all nations. Help us, as you did, to encounter the Creator God, present in the very depths of nature, and so become witnesses of life. With you we praise the Father, the Son, and the Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Jackson. Gnaskar trustee Intomasi for motions adopted in camera and information received in camera.
Can you hear me okay? All right. Okay. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the memorandum of settlement between the Board and APSSP dated March 22nd, 2016, to be effective September 1st, 2014, and to expire August 31st, 2017. We also have resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the memorandum of settlement between the Board and QP Local 5200 Educational Assistance dated March 29th, 2016, to be effective September 1st, 2014, and to expire August 31st, 2017. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the memorandum of settlement between the Board and QP Local 5200 Unit B Designated Early Childhood Educators dated April 5th, 2016, to be effective September 1st, 2014, and to expire August 31st, 2017. In HR, we have retirements. We have Patricia McLean retiring effective April 30th, 2016. We have Vincent Blaine, Tammy Ellis, Catherine Foch, Diane Fox, Oksana Krosnyek, I apologize for my mispronunciation, Margot Olivieri, Neola Vetonis, and Diane Vischedik retiring effective June 30th, 2016, Annette Raper retiring effective first, 2016. In Curriculum Consultant Generalists, we have Karen Becker, Mary Terry Durham, Teresa Foster, Catherine Jenkins, Jill Staples, and Anna Total, appointed as Curriculum Consultants Generalists effective September 1st, 2016, for a period of up to three years, with the possibility of a one-year extension. Further, we have Paul Deany and Catherine Stevenson, appointed as secondary school principals, effective September 1st, 2016. Norman Roberts appointed a secondary school vice principal, effective September 1st, 2016, sorry, 16. And we have Colin Simpson appointed as acting elementary school vice principal, effective May 2nd, 2016, to June 30th, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intomasi. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Rowe.
I have a question about the agenda. Check, check. Looking at action items number 8.2 and 8.3, I'm wondering through you, Madam Chair, for a ruling, as there is no resolution attached to these action items, so I don't know how they can be action items if they are not proposed as actions in the body of the agenda.
Staff has made a recommendation that all trustees have read, and at this point, we now need trustees to bring motions to the floor to fill in the resolution.
Through you, Madam Chair. In regular course, though, if we were to propose a resolution, there would have to be a notice of motion brought by the Board, and it would, through our policy, come back at a future date.
Through you, Madam Chair. These two reports are recommendations, and hence not final reports, but interim's reports for your receipt and approval to move forward. So if you look at the title of them, trustee Quinn, it's an update and a recommendation, and then trustees can decide how to move forward with that.
Through you, Madam Chair. As a follow-up, would that not then be, by definition, an information item and not an action item, because there is no direction given in the resolution? It would be for discussion in information items, but not in action items?
Trustee Marai?
Can we not accept objects at all as any other action item?
That was the plan. Does anyone else have an objection?
So I'm guessing, I'm asking for you then, as a Chair, to give a ruling that, according to our bylaws, that we can cause a vote on an action item that has not, that is merely a recommendation and hasn't gone through the notice of motion first?
The staff recommendation was in the resolution box, and after talking to trustees, and of course, my own opinion, that a staff recommendation should not have been put in there to defer until we'd had other trustees have their opportunity to move. So we left it as a recommendation. It didn't go further than that. Staff had changed from day one, January 19th, till April, whatever it is today, or Friday. So that's the way we're moving forward.
Has it changed since I received my package?
Friday, no. Nothing has changed, so you've read it all.
So that, so what's the ruling then? Can we bring action items?
You can wait till we get to it and see what the trustees have to offer.
So you're ruling that it is an action item?
Yes.
According to what bylaw?
I, it's my ruling.
Beyond our bylaws? I question whether we can move forward on, as an action item, if it doesn't have something attached that we'll be voting on. We can't propose something in the middle of our meeting and then vote on it that should go to policy, or that should be a notice of motion, according to my understanding of the bylaws. Maybe trustee Marai can weigh in.
Traditionally, when, traditionally, when the Chair makes a ruling, it's final and we move on.
Well, you have to get it closer. Just bring it closer.
Yeah, traditionally, when the Chair makes a ruling, is it not final?
That's what I thought. You didn't have a question until now. You could have asked this beforehand, when you received your package, but we are going to move on.
Well, I only ask the questions in the public session. That's when I want to ask my questions.
Okay. So we had a mover and a seconder for the agenda. Helen, trustee Marai, and seconded, Rowe. All in favor? All opposed? So moved. Declaration of Conflicts of Interest, seeing none. Presentation, 4.1, a robotics presentation, and superintendent for Caston will introduce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure this evening to welcome Sharri Typer, consultant in our Halton Catholic Board, along with some wonderful students and staff and parents who are joining us this evening to highlight some of the special projects they have been working on. Sharri?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. With us today, we have students from both St. Mary's and St. Patrick's Elementary Schools. We have a number of students from grade 3, 6, and 7. We'll introduce them in a moment. And this is in response to some funding that we received in October through code. So a number of funds were dispersed to 20 of our elementary schools, and with a 20/80 split between grade primary and grade 7, 8. And so really, this is about the showcase of the enthusiasm, the 21st century skills that those students have been demonstrating within the classroom through their teachers. So really looking at the problem solving, the collaboration. There's some literacy and numeracy embedded within, but I would really like to, at this point, turn it over to the students and allow them the opportunity to demonstrate what they've been working on, and feel free to ask them a couple of questions. So if you will, from St. Patrick's, we have three teachers, Olga Pona, Cynthia Cantino, Mike O'Neal. Their grade 6 students, Dominic, Pierce, Stephen, and Daniel. And their grade students, Ben, Owen, Maxim, and Cooper. And from St. Mary's, with Christina Kilchrist as their teacher, grade 7s Annika and Yulia, Ellie and Morella, and grade 3 students Ava and William.
Welcome to the Zombie Wheel. You may think this is the ordinary Ferris wheel ride, but it's not. A rider's get on the ride, but they never come off. Once they enjoy their ride, they try to get off, but a zombie eats their brains.
First, the computer showed us how to program a quarter turn. We wanted four people to go on the ride, so we copied what the computer showed us four times. Then we wanted a full turn, so we made the motor turn the other way and run four times as long. The Ferris wheel makes a full turn without stopping.
This is the Crane of Doom. We called our creation the Crane of Doom because it knocked down a building that was haunted. It's being used to build a hospital in the same place as the old building. People are cheering at the end of the program because the haunted building was scaring their children, and now the ghosts are banished back to the outlands. First, the program showed us how to raise the hook, but not how to lower it. So we read the icons to find a button that would make it lower. Then we found a button with an arrow pointing the other way, so we put it in the program, and it made the crane go the other way, which is down.
Next, we wanted to go, next, we wanted to get it to stop before it went the other way. We found a button with a motor on, and an X on it. So we put the, we put it in the program. The arrow that makes, we put the arrow that makes the motor go the other way behind it. We made it run for the same amount of time.
Then we put an icon that has an X on the motor at the end of the program, so it would stop when it was done.
Lastly, we added music, and it cheers.
We, our job was to connect it to a Catholic graduate expectation, and we connected it to the collaborative contributor, because in a soccer team, you have to contribute to your team.
How it contributes to it, how, how it, yeah, to it. We did it so, like, it's going for its team to help it.
So these two young ladies were part of a robotics buddies program that was happening between the grade 7s and the grade 3s. So, and the other guys were grade 3s.
So, like Yulia and Ava, we had to relate it back to a Catholic graduate expectation. We chose an effective communicator. We made the snapping alligator. I believe that's what it's called.
It communicates in more than one way.
He uses actions and words, which is two different ways of communication, body language and words. And he also communicates politely.
Okay. Pardon my voice recording. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good.
Okay, so we built a robot that can find missing paint on a wall and paint it for you, right here. So...
The materials that we used were the Lego 3 EV3 corset.
So we used quite, like, two sensors and two motors to build this. And there's the color sensor and the touch sensor, which the touch sensor makes it start and stop. And the color sensor will look at the wall and try and find the colors you program it to. And we chose red and white. So if it saw white, it would paint the wall, and if it saw red, it would not paint it and restart.
So this motor moves the paintbrush up and down, and the motor at the back moves the wheel back and forth.
These two young ladies also participated in the Bay Area Science and Engineering Fair this year with St. Mary's.
Okay, so the robot we made was one of the basic robots, but we customized it to do, like, if it went into, like, a wall or something, the motion sensor would make it turn around and go the other way. The sensor, what it does is, it has, like, a certain radius, and once it senses, like, 15 centimeters away, it would turn, like, here.
Wait. Can you press the rubber from there? Can you use that one?
Okay. All right.
Is that working?
Okay.
Get back.
Both of these robots, we made the standard, we made it from the instructions, but then we put our own custom touch on it. So, well, these ones were made for fighting each other, but this one can also go on all terrains, so it can climb over pretty much any book, or laptop, or, like, this. But, wait.
Catch it. Catch him.
Jarrow Boy was a self-bouncing robot that moved on two wheels, but we couldn't program it that way, so we had to add a stand onto it for stability, for it to move correctly.
So again, a big thank you to St. Patrick's and St. Mary's, all the programming done themselves.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank your teachers, and I thank your parents who brought you here. It brings us back to what we're all about, seeing the students. Thank you. Awesome job. Good job. I know. It's fabulous. I think it's great watching you. Good job, guys. Good job. I'm sorry. Attached are the minutes of the regular board meeting of April the 5th. May I have a mover for those minutes, please? Trustee Intomasi, seconded by trustee Trice, all in favor? Thank you. Attached 7.1 is a summary of the outstanding items from the previous meeting. Is there any questions regarding that? Seeing none. Moving on to our action items. 8.1. As I said earlier, staff have all read the reports, and we all have devoured the information in front of us. We're moving on to 8.1, the North Georgetown Modified Pupil Accommodation Review, the final report and recommendations. Superintendent Oroh?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. The following action item, 8.1.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Point of order, Madam Chair. It's best practice to move and second the action item prior to its presentation or debate.
May I have a mover for this? Georgetown, trustee Rowe, seconded. Trustee Rabenda, all in favor? So moved?
No. Moved and seconded.
I meant discussion, I'm sorry. So moved.
Again, through you, Madam Chair. So the following action item, 8.1, is being presented to trustees this evening related to the North Georgetown Modified Pupil Accommodation Review. On January 19th, 2016, on approval by trustees to proceed with a modified pupil accommodation review for North Georgetown. As a result, consultation took place and a variety of methods to stakeholders between January 20th to April 19th of this year. An interim staff report is there for trustees. As well, the attached detailed report provides trustees with a summary of the terms of reference, which we will speak to in the presentation that is before you, as that was one of the areas in which feedback was asked as to what that transition plan would look like moving forward. So in regards to that transition plan, and the overview for that, the mandate of the committee would be to provide feedback to senior staff in regards to the original transition plan that would be available to that committee, and be able to allow input from that committee, and I'll talk in regards to the composition of the committee a little bit later on in the plan, and also talk about their, the committee's roles and their responsibilities. Again, the staff recommended transition plan would be presented, and the committee can provide comments and details in regards to that, to make that plan finalized. The committee mandate would look at a number of areas, and they are listed before, I won't go into detail as to what they would be, but this is the areas, and again, not limited to, we would probably, as we move forward, find other topics that probably would be related to the need of this committee to examine, but they would be such things as the timing of the plan, the selection of the holding school, if that's required, portable needs, structure of classrooms, and the school organization, if schools coming together, particularly during the transition year, transportation needs, and so on. There's a, there's a number of factors, again, I won't list them all, but they are there before you. As well, the committee would be tasked, again, in a leading role in providing recommendations to the Chair, which would be assigned to the school, family of school superintendent to the matters listed below, such as community building and transition activities, a school closing event in collaboration with staff, selecting of the school name in accordance with our policy and procedures, school uniform and logos, again, in accordance with board policy, coordination of school academic resources, teams and clubs and extracurricular activities during that transition year, school-generated funds for each of the schools, and how those funds would be utilized, and other items as deemed necessary by the committee. As of right now, what we would see that transition committee being comprised of would be at least two parent representatives from each of the schools involved in the consolidation, at least one school council representative, at least two teacher representatives from each of the schools involved, the principal or vice principal of each school, one support staff member of each school, and such persons as appointed by the Director of Education. And we also have core resource members, which would be the admin assistant of the school superintendent involved, as well as the superintendent of facility services. Other resources that could be utilized and may need to be utilized is throughout planning services administrator, superintendent of business, or their designate, strategic communication, or their designate, human resources, the executive officer, or designate, senior administration for IT, and Halton Transportation Services as well. And we have, again, optional members, and we say optional at this point in time, we may be looking at that to make these mandated, but we, at this point in time, we look at them as at least one, and we're looking at elementary at this point in time. If we are looking at a secondary, we certainly would include students at that, but for right now, looking at the elementary, we would have at least one, and a maximum of two, grade 6 and 7 student representatives from each of the schools, at least one priest and one pastor or minister of each of the parish involved, and representative childcare's, if they are involved in the process, community representatives, municipal planning, and regional Halton staff as well.
So I'll just go through a little bit what the process would look like if and why a transition process were to be initiated. Now, just to direct you within the staff report, all these sections are present in all four reports that are before you tonight. Section 5 provides you an overview of essentially this entire process we just spoke to in a little bit more detail. Appendix E to that would be the terms of reference, draft terms of reference, which we'll get to in a second, which essentially sets out the roles and responsibilities of the transitional committee, and who's involved, and who's going to be partaking, what their goals and objectives are, and things of that nature. And lastly, in appendix E, to the points that Tim was speaking, was speaking to, that provides, I'm sorry, appendix F, that provides kind of a detailed summary as to what some of the matters they'll be discussing, and provides... of the matters they'll be discussing in, provides a little bit more context and will provide insight to as to what different types of members will be doing in terms of that subject matter. Are they going to be providing feedback? Are they going to be a key resource or will be putting forward recommendations? And this is divvied up into three sections, both for core members, resource staff, as well as the optional members. Now, before you right now is just a quick overview as to what the process would look like, and this is also further explained in terms of reference. So first and foremost, the starting point to all this, as an aside of what the preliminary accommodation plan was presented within the PAR process, it starts with board approval. And from that point, what we would start looking at is developing some of the preliminary views as to what the holding school could potentially be. Are we still moving forward the same plan and how things are going to be organized? So we're going to start developing what we call the draft transition accommodation plan. Once the ministry approves the funding, then we would go forward and complete the initial transition accommodation plan. Now, the reason why we're waiting for ministry approval is that we're not always guaranteed that when we submit, we're going to immediately get the approval right away, so we want to make sure that the representatives are the ones that are partaking in school activities right away and that if approval happens in a year or a year after, the members at the table of the transition committee are those that have a current stake in it. So that's why, at that point, we'll set the exact timelines. There's also the factor too that, as Tim kind of alluded to in terms of the school organization, when two schools come together, depending when ministry approvals come forward will potentially determine whether the schools come together as a whole and get integrated or if schools will have to function as two separate entities because of staffing. So again, that's why we want to put a lot more detail and finalize the initial plan at that point in time. Now, once that happens, then we're going to establish the committee based on the members that were explained previously. Then what we'll do is we're going to have what we call the orientation meeting with the transition committee. So the first thing is definitely the meet and greet, everybody gets to know who everybody is and what part they have to play in the process. The second is us explaining to them what the terms of reference is. So that is the opportunity for them to get some clarity as to what the roles and responsibilities are and how things are going to move forward in terms of setting working meetings or when to meet, setting agenda items, topics of conversation, things of that nature. And then we're going to present to them the interim transition accommodation plan. So that's kind of the framework where we're starting and that's, that plan really is a big component of what they'll be commenting, providing feedback on, insight from the school communities as to how best transition into the ultimate plan. Now, in the terms of reference, we're looking up to three working meetings. They have the opportunity to provide additional working meetings if it's so desired and as long as it's within the timelines of construction, we're trying to get the school open. But essentially, what they do in these working meetings is go through a lot of the items that they want to provide feedback on or the key lead items that they want to address, like the school naming, the uniform, some of the events, so they can set their own agenda on to go forward with the assistance of the chair, which is going to be the assigned family school superintendent. Once that's complete, staff will finalize, based on a lot of the conversations that were taking place, the final accommodation transition plan. We'll present it to the committee, we'll deploy a full-blown communication to all community members so they can understand exactly what will be happening and have a clear idea of the timelines, and then ultimately, it would be full implementation of the transition plan, so going from start to finish, from holding, if required, to the new school, if not. This is just a summary, we'll be providing this online too as a resource, but it's just the written summary of the table. So at that point, these were general items that were applicable to all four. Now...
Through Madam Chair, I guess the last part is, final staff recommendation is based on the needs of students. Staff recommends the following actions to be taken within the North Georgetown Community Accommodation Review area, that Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School, St. Francis of Assisi be consolidated into the North Georgetown Community Catholic Elementary School for the 2017-2018 school year at the earliest, and that the North Georgetown Catholic Elementary School be located on the board-owned Burton Boulevard site, and the constructed facility be comprised of a 671 pupil place elementary school with an 88 space five-room childcare center wing slated open for 2017-2018 school year at the earliest, that the board redirect all programs currently offered at the two schools to the new North Georgetown Catholic Elementary School, that the following, the completion of the North Georgetown Catholic Elementary School construction project, board shall close both Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School and St. Francis of Assisi Catholic Elementary School and redirect students to the new school, and that following the completion of the project, both sites be declared surplus to the board's needs and both site, both sites be circulated through the Ontario Regulation 444-98 disposition process.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, we now ask for a trustee to make a motion. Trustee Rowe?
Point of order, Madam Chair. If I may, the motion that was made, it was moved and seconded, but I think the form of the motion should have been something to the effect that we move to adopt the North of Door Georgetown Accommodation Review with recommendations 1 through 5. That should, something have been like that.
Is that all right with everyone? Seeing no objection? All in favor?
No discussion?
Certainly.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I wanted to amend the resolution as stated by Anthony Danko and remove section 5. I think we can wait to decide whether the land is surplus or not until a future meeting of our board, and it need not be included at this very early stages of the planning. So I recommend that we support 1 through 4, but leave number 5 off until the board can further consider whether the land should go for disposition or not.
Do you have a second or for the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Discussion on that?
Madam Chair, it's useful to point out that the Regulation 444-98 is being proposed to be revised by the province. I do not know the timetable, but the public consultations began in December and that did not come to the board table. Those changes did not come to this board table, and even though it's public information regarding the Education Act, for some reason, this didn't make it to us. The changes to that regulation, the proposed changes are changing the timelines from 90 to 180 days upon which the new list of groups, community groups, has right of first refusal on the sale of a school board property. So I do not know what the province's timeline is for approving those changes. I don't know if it's a lieutenant governor and council that makes the regulation or if the House has to be in session for the changes to be made, but those are still pending. The consultations have taken place and that, what that will do is it'll expand the list of agencies and bodies that get right of first refusal on that. So once we're, we're clear about what, what those changes are and when they take effect, I don't think we should include recommendation 5.
Trustee Rowe?
Just a question, does the EMPAR process require an example of what we plan to do with the resources after we close them?
Through you, Madam Chair. Essentially, the, under the new regulations that were brought forward about two years ago under the school board modernization efficiency and something that came forward soon after, once a school is declared surplus and disposed through the disposition process 444-98, the proceeds from that disposition, also known as PODs, those get placed into a reserve fund, which is called the Proceeds and Disposition Fund, and those are now earmarked for renewal projects across the board. So this money that we would generate from the sale of these properties would be reinvested in our schools as a source of funding for renewal projects.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, but they're not contingent as part of this closure consolidation process that we initiate the disposal or the disposition of the land presently.
Through you, Madam Chair, and you know, you're absolutely correct, trustee Quinn. And just a point of clarity, we're just advising the board that staff's ultimate recommendation will be to come forward to you under the regular process that we go through for the disposition of these properties. So we're going to have to go and declare these surpluses aboard at a later time, once the implementation is complete. This is only providing you the intent that that is our long-term plan. It is not contingent on the approval of the Modified Pupil Accommodation Review to dispose of the properties. We were just trying to provide clarity as to what the ultimate plan was based on staff's best recommendations. That is all.
Trustee Danko and then trustee Quinn?
But Madam Chair, what the approval of the recommendation package would be, 1 through 5, would automatically trigger that regulation, and we would be approving the sale of those now. And if I understand correctly, Mr. Quinn's amendment is to remove recommendation 5 from the list.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So Fred did reinstate my point that we can make that decision at a later time based on the best advice we get in the future, and we need not make that decision now, and if we do make that decision now, then we're beholden to it. So I recommend we remove 5 and after your support in that motion.
Trustee Rowe?
I would support that, that logic, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Discussion? Trustee Trites? I can't hear you. Just speak into the...
She couldn't hear you.
I just said I would support that logic.
Seeing no other questions, we'll call the vote on the amendments, 1 through 4. All in favor? Seems to be unanimous. So the EMPAR, one, only recommendations 1 through 4 have passed.
That was a vote on the amendment.
Yeah, now I'm going to call the vote on the original. Do you mind to repeat? Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, the motion is now to adopt the North Georgetown Accommodation Review Area, recommendations 1 through 4.
Seconder?
Now we're discussing the main motion.
Trustee Carabella?
No, I'm seconding it. Sorry.
Yes?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate my point that I made at the start of the school consolidation approval process, that our board consider proceeding only with one closure consolidation request to the Ministry of Education. It is my understanding from senior staff, my fellow trustee from Halton Hills, and hearing from residents that the Georgetown issue presents the most pressing need for our board. If we submit multiple plans to the province, we leave it to their discretion to decide where their limited resources will be placed. My concern now, as I stated at previous meetings, is that by not emphasizing the importance of the needs of Georgetown Catholic Elementary School today as a priority in our board, we run the risk of Georgetown being left out again with the ministry deciding into which community they wish to invest according to their own agenda and not to our own.
Thank you. Any other questions? We call the vote on the main motion. All in favor? And once again, unanimous. Thank you. We're moving on to 8.2.
Madam Chair, I move that the Halton Catholic District School Board be it resolved that the Halton Catholic School Board not approve the Burlington Southeast Modified Pupil Accommodation Review.
And a seconder? Seconded by trustee Marai, discussion? Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I personally was hoping, hoping for a deferral on this, and I want to explain my rationale. I understand that everyone here is, you know, there's been a lot of upset, and I know that people would like to start afresh, but I was hoping that as a board, we could allow a few extra weeks to allow the staff to step up and let us know, most specifically, what the realistic and time-effective land options with written letters of intent from the city would be, because we did hear from, in delegations, that that was a possibility. I'd also like to see some written timelines and what the St. Paul land requirement will be, should assumption come up in the secondary assessments, and I'd also like to know, and I'm sure the parents here should know, what the alternative consolidation options could be and whether they would affect boundary reviews. Because my concern is that we shut it down without getting this information, now we have to wait another year just to get that information, or as if we were to defer it just to the beginning of June, at least we could get information from there. So what I, what I really would like to see is a deferral rather than just voting it down, because if it does come back, no one knows what shape and form it's going to take, and we don't know whether more people will be upset and will be going through this again, and we still, even after we come up with a second option or third option, we still don't know if it'll get approved, and if it gets approved, where that will put us with the ministry. That doesn't mean just because we have something new that the ministry is going to approve it. And I would really like to know how assumption plays into this, because all the schools in South Burlington feed into assumption. So until I personally have an answer for assumption, I'm having a problem voting yea or nay.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I intend to support trustee Danko's resolution to, to not support the EMPAR for Southeast Burlington, but I'm not saying that there's not a possibility of future closures for our school. I think the process was flawed and, and the community has pointed out many of the... I don't want to discount the hard work of our senior staff in any way, and the information was terrific, but I don't think we gave proper time to address the concerns of the residents, and I don't think Arlene's suggestion, trustee Intomasi's suggestion of a deferral would answer those queries at this point. So I want to support trustee Danko's resolution.
Trustee Rabenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to support trustee Ian Tomasi. I too am very concerned. We've had a lot of talk over the last few years about assumption, and all of a sudden, we're not talking about it right now. And I think that it has to be considered as part of the entire process, because St. Paul's uses the property that belongs to assumption, and so we want to make sure that we have covered all our bases. I've had people writing to me supporting a deferral. I'm not sure it has to go to June 7th, maybe we'll get the results within a few weeks, I don't know. But I'd be very interested also in knowing what the city has to say. I've heard both ways, the city does not have any land for us, I've also heard that the city has not been asked, and I truly don't know. So I would also like to see something in writing for that, and we do have to look at the big picture with regard to the boundary also, so I'm thinking the same way at this point in time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? We'll call the vote. All in favor of trustee Danko's?
What are we voting on, please? What's the motion on the table?
Would you please repeat the motion?
Madam Chair, the motion is that the Halton, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board not approve the Burlington Southeast Modified Pupil Accommodation Review.
Thank you.
So I am voting in favor of not approving it.
All in favor?
This is recorded vote, ma'am.
Okay.
Did we get that all recorded?
Yes, we have it.
Helen, you get all the names?
Pardon me? We have it. 8.3, Burlington, trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I move that the Halton Catholic District School Board not approve the Burlington Southwest Modified Pupil Accommodation Review.
Have a second or trustee Quinn?
It's the same motion, I just changed the E to a double.
I know. Questions? Discussion? Trustee Carabella?
I just want to say thank you to all the delegations for their research and their work and their voice, and I also do appreciate the amount of work the staff has put into answering the questions.
Comments? Questions? Call the vote. Trustee Intomasi?
I'm back. Going to repeat too.
Again, because this one more directly affects St. Paul, how St. Paul, whether holy rosary gets thrown into the mix, we really do need to spread that net to see what we can do for the communities. But again, I don't see, it'd be great if we have, you know, several new elementary schools, but if our counterparts beat us to a brand-new Nelson... schools, but if our counterparts beat us to a brand-new Nelson, sorry folks, but I have to ask, are you going to be the same people who want to stay in community and then send your kids to a new Nelson?
No!
That's, I've got it, and I've heard you. Thank you.
Trustee Rabenda?
Following on, I continue to ask for a few weeks' deferral so that we can get more information. I do believe that assumption should be part of this whole discussion. We hear about it all the time until this Empire came up, and then there's very little talk about assumption. And I think we need to know a little bit more as to what our chances are with assumption and where it will go for the total community of Burlington. Thank you.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I agree with Trustee Rabenda's point about assumption and Intomasi's, but it was not part of this process. As an Oakville trustee, I'm not familiar with it. I can't vote for a deferral. I'll need a lot more information than a couple of weeks of research on how the Empire process is working out.
Anyone else like to speak to this? Trustee Trites? Trustee Marai?
Just one thing to kind of clarify, and that is that I think we heard quite clearly from the community that, I'm not sure they want to hear about this issue anytime soon from us. I think they're happy with the local communities that they have, and I'm not sure suggesting that we bring this up anytime soon is a good idea. I think we heard from them very clearly, and I think we need to let these communities exist as they do.
Seeing no other comments, call the vote. You want to read it again, Anthony? Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board not approve the Burlington Southwest Modified Pupil Accommodation Review.
All in favor? Moving on to 8.4, Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve Recommendations 1 through 5 for the Oakville South Central Accommodation Review.
Trustee Quinn?
I'm philosophically opposed to closing Catholic elementary schools adjacent to a parish until such time as we are compelled to do so. I've not found in this Empire to be compelling enough to allow me to support the decision of closing St. James Elementary. I would ask, similar to the intentions of the Burlington Empires, that we not vote to approve this in its current form.
Other comments, discussion? Trustee Rabenda and Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm specifically concerned about number 5 on that list, the community hubs and making the current St. James School a source of inspiration and consolation and solace and so forth. I don't want this to fall through the cracks should it be approved. I would like to know what exactly the plans would be. Would there be a social worker or someone who would work from the board's perspective with the community? But I do want to see something done, because there are many people, those of us who work with disadvantaged know how many are in need of help, and we just don't want to wash our hands of this. We want to make sure that these community hubs, should this pass, are taken care of and that it's a good situation for the residents.
Thank you. Trustee Danko?
Just a point of clarification, my fellow trustee was referring to the community hubs as Recommendation 6, which I've not moved to be included. But my point is, the point I wanted to make is that the St. James School, it's regrettable that the utilization rate has fallen to 50%, and I think that maintaining, voting against this proposal and maintaining overcapacity in our schools is not a good idea. I think that the Burlington review areas had not such a low utilization rate, and we need to make best use of our assets. In some cases, that may mean removing a school that's adjacent to a church. We have seen that a church moved from one of our schools in Milton, although it's regrettable. I think that this is going to be a wise thing to do to rebalance our resources as proposed in this Empire.
Trustee Rabenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I get some clarification, please, from Trustee Danko? Anthony, you didn't include item number 6, am I correct?
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Recommendations 1 through 5 and not 6 for the Oakville South Central Accommodation Review, which was seconded and we're debating at this time.
May I ask why?
Because the community needs more consultation to determine what is going to take place in a community hub. And I think that more consultation would be required, instead of simply approving it without going through some sort of consultation process to see how that school will be used.
I don't see that that particular item precludes such consultation, but if you do not put something in to indicate that it is going to be used for the community, it may end up as another source of whatever.
Madam Chair, another reason I'm in favor of this proposal, because it brings the adult learning center into use in the facility, and I think it should be a single-purpose use for the adult learning center. It also wisely reduces our leasing options for the other site that's presently being used for the adult learning center.
I would be quite happy to see the adult learning center occupy part of that building. Could that be included in that particular item under number 6? I'm not sure that I want to make an amendment at that time, because it certainly would lock it in.
Madam Chair, if my fellow board member is asking me, I'm not open to amendments on that point. I think that if it is brought up later, that's fine. It could be brought up as a motion at some later date, once the process has been completed. But I do think that since that's going to be dedicated to a new use, it should be a single use for the adult learning center, and that sole, single use.
Trustee Rabenda?
My final comment. I am prepared to leave that for another discussion on another day.
Trustee Carabella?
I just wanted to say that I see there's lots to decide, but I do think Catholic schools next to Catholic churches are better Catholic schools. It connects the children, it connects the children to a church, to their clergy, and to feel at home in a spiritual place. This will help lay a foundation for their spiritual life, and it makes us even more distinctly Catholic.
Trustee Quinn, did you have a question?
No, but I'd like to echo Trustee Carabella's comments.
Did anyone else have a question? Trustee Marai?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question to staff, one of the delegations at the prior meeting raised the issue of integration of students and how we can best integrate students at various socioeconomic levels, and I'm just wondering what their plan would be, and number two, what they've seen us do in other schools of ours in our district.
Superintendent Pennelli?
Well, part of this goes back to what trustee, we're hearing about number 6. And number 6 was purposely put on this recommendation to address that delegation, to address the inequities, and to try to address the St. James being the hub for the area of the community that still relies on before-and-after-school programs. So that was part of the discussion in terms of what we're referring to as programs exploring with the school community, the St. James School community, in terms of what was shared by Superintendent Overhall in the transition plan and committee, to look at what are some of the needs for that community, number one, in terms of before-and-after-school programs, busing pickups, and other things in that community that still meets their need before they go to the new school. So your comment in terms of number 6, that's what that is addressing.
And I appreciate that, and I don't think that the motion precludes number 6 ever happening. But Madam Chair, my question specifically is to their integration into their potential new school if the board should pass this. So what steps does our school, what step does our school board take in helping integrate students of various socioeconomic needs?
We would be working with the principal and working with, as we do in any other boundary review and any other issues, in looking at each individual student, their needs, and what is required in terms of transitioning them into their programs and into their classrooms. We do that in other school communities. This is nothing new for us. We've done this in all our boundary reviews, and it goes on all the time.
Trustee Quinn?
Just one more comment. I'm not against in Oakville improving the school situation and utilizing school space, but again, philosophically and practically, if we remove schools from adjacent to parishes, they'll never be replaced. When population changes in the future, if and when it does, we won't have the opportunity to rebuild on our footprints adjacent to parishes. And if my fellow trustees would reject Trustee Danko's proposal, then my first wish that only Georgetown would be submitted would be pro per fruition, and we would have that single voice speaking to the ministry, telling them that Georgetown is our priority.
Madam Chair, I think that it is not a guaranteed assumption to know that the church will actually remain where it is. We're seeing that other dioceses are proposing parish consolidations of their own. I think that we need to make a better effort to bring the students to a parish, and that the cost savings alone, over $800,000 in the lease savings and other operational costs and other efficiencies gained by this particular proposal could be devoted to buses taking children to mass at St. Dominic's or another church even closer.
Trustee Marai?
Madam Chair, my colleague, Mr. Danko, has significant experience in helping projects for school renewal get approved. He'd done so with St. Thomas Aquinas School, which allowed for a fantastic facility in South Oakville. And one of the things that leads me to support his motion today is because of the incredible facilities we look to build in South Oakville for our future.
Any other questions or comment? So if you could repeat your amendment that we could call the vote. Sorry?
Not an amendment, Madam Chair, but a motion.
A motion, sorry.
Nonetheless, I understand what you mean. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board adopt Recommendations 1 through 5 of the Oakville South Central Accommodation Review proposal.
May I have you to call the vote, please? All in favor? So moved.
Quite a word of Madam Chair.
Yes.
As per our bylaws, the action item should be recorded in a public vote. Are the names being taken down of who's voting for what?
Yes.
And who's recording those?
Me. Moving on to 8.5, school naming. Oakville Preserve Catholic Elementary School, Superintendent Supriano?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, present this action report regarding the naming of the new North Oakville Preserve Catholic Elementary School. This action report, Madam Chair, do you want this to be moved?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to move it.
Trustee Marai, seconded. Trustee Carabella, thank you.
Thank you. Once again, this action report follows on the staff report that was presented at the April 5th regular meeting of the board, whereby the process, the timelines, and the consultation process was described in the naming of the new North Oakville Preserve School. As part of the naming committee and after parent consultation and voting took place, you have before you the results of the voting on the three suggested names. As a result of the consultation and voting, and following our board policy I-15, you have before you a resolution recommending that St. Gregory the Great be the preferred name to be submitted to Bishop Crosby for his consideration and response, and should that name not be acceptable, a request to consider St. Teresa le Soue as an alternate. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this report or the process in coming to this conclusion.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. By my count, among the 57 school buildings currently in our board, only eight of them are named after women other than our Blessed Mary, Blessed Mother Mary. There's Bridget, Catherine, Anne, Elizabeth, Marguerite, Teresa Bernadette, and Joan. As a father of four daughters attending the board, I'm looking for role models for them among the holy men and women who have played a significant role in the history of the Roman Catholic Church. And while I respect the results of the 31 future families who participated in the naming questionnaire, I think it's incumbent upon our board to rectify the imbalance or perhaps the unintentional bias in favoring male saints in the naming of schools over female saints. So as we are in the middle of Aboriginal Awareness Week, and with my personal fondness for the inspiring story of this saint, I propose a revision to this resolution, and be it resolved that the HDCSB's New Elementary School in North Oakville Preserve take the name of the first Native American saint, the Lily of the Mohawks, St. Kateri Tekawitha, for as long as the building as extent, and pass that suggestion on to Bishop Crosby for his approval.
Do I have a seconder? Trustee Carabella, discussion?
Sorry, just to be clear, what's the amendment? To just provide one suggestion to Bishop Crosby?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a policy in place I-15, which states the process for naming a school, and that is not part of the process that's already been passed by the board. So if we would like to amend that policy, before doing that, we can, but we'd be going against our own policy as a board to accomplish that. So respectfully, I would suggest that we continue discussion on the main motion, because I don't think this amendment is in order.
Do you have a follow-up for that?
Through you, Madam Chair, does the policy preclude us from how many names we can submit to the bishop?
It does. It says the board will review and approve a list of two names, a preferred and alternate, and that's the motion that I made today.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I don't support not following our policy. We've learned a lesson, I think, from this evening about following our policies and procedures. So I think that if you want to deviate from policy, that would require two-thirds, but I don't support doing that.
If I may make a suggestion, Madam Chair, I think that the comments by Trustee Quinn are well-taken, and that it would be nice to have more women saints on our schools. But I think that if we're going to make that decision, I think we should start that from the beginning of the process with our naming process, and so we could take it to policy, for instance, change the policy, and that way we're clear with our community. So we have asked for buy-in to the community with this process that we've undertaken, and I think that we should finish it through, considering this is what we've already described to them. And I think in future, if you'd like to make changes like this, that may be the appropriate time through a policy change of our board.
Through you, Madam Chair, then I will alter at your, if you allow me, the revision that I proposed to the resolution, and I will add that we propose St. Kateri Tekawitha and St. Therese be submitted to the bishop for his approval or consideration.
Trustee Rabenda?
Anthony, I like the names, St. Kateri too, and it's been on our list a number of years now on this board as being a possible name. But the fact of the matter is, we gave the community a policy approved by this board that gave them the right to do the survey and come up with the names that they so chose, and they have done that. And I think if we want to change the policy for the next brand-new school, which I don't know when it's going to be or where it's going to be, but then we do it for the next school, but I don't think you can go back to the community and say... if we want to change the policy for the next brand-new school, which, uh, I don't know when it, when it's going to be or where it's going to be, but then we do it for the next school. But I don't think you can go back to the community and say, "We're not happy with the names you've chosen, so we're gonna change the policy so we can put in the name we want." But I take well your comments regarding to the first Aboriginal saint. Absolutely. I, I'm very much in favor of the name, but I think there is a process.
Through you, Madam Chair. The, the two names that I, I've proposed in my resolution are both, were both on the shortlist as chosen by the parents. It just wasn't, uh, I've removed the male name, not, not the female name.
There are two names on this list, right?
That was a mistype. There were, there were three names proposed and, and Kateri came in third.
Yes. The resolution calls for two names.
It's not a mistype.
There are two names on the page. On the, uh, you've got three?
We've got Saint Gregory.
And Saint Therese.
But, but the, in the poll that we did propose to the parents, Saint Kateri was the third name on that list, and it was just underneath the first two choices of only 31 families.
Trustee Moray.
Madam Chair, respectfully, I, I don't believe that the, the amendment is in order because it changes the, the meeting too significantly of the motion that I've made. We could potentially vote down my motion and then a new motion could be made, uh, in order to do, to do that. That's one way we, we could do it. But I would suggest we went through this process exactly how, as a board, we voted on it and how it's outlined to the community. We actually went to the, the, the school community and asked them to vote on their top preferred choices. The majority of the community came back with Saint Gregory the Great and a, and the second option. And I think that we should follow our policy and vote yes to this to send to Bishop Crosby for his, um, for his decision.
Trustee Carabella.
I just, uh, want a point of clarification. I think on our policy that if the bishop doesn't approve any of those, he does have the option to, uh, suggest another name. So that would be fair to follow the policy on that.
I'm sure the bishop could choose. Yeah. Uh, all right. The discussion seems to have come to an end.
So I, I have a...
We don't have a, we have a second there. All right. We'll vote on, um, trustee Quinn's amendment or new motion.
Madam Chair, I suggested that that amendment was not in order because it directly changes the meaning of the motion that I provided. If the board should choose to vote down this motion, then he could, uh, come up with another motion of his own at his, at his discretion.
Yes, I agree with that. We have to follow the policy as was displayed by the trustees speaking. So, uh, can we call a vote on the first motion, please? All in favor that resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the following two school names ordered in priority as possible names for the new North Oakville Preserve Catholic Elementary School. First choice, Saint Gregory the Great. Second choice, Saint Therese La Soue. That the board-approved list of possible school names be submitted to Bishop Douglas Crosby for his consideration and response. Trustee, oh, we're voting. All in favor? All opposed? So moved. Eight point six, proposed 2016 facility renewal project. Superintendent Corbaccio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the March 10th board meeting, we presented to trustees an outline of the major proposed, uh, facility renewal projects for 216. And in that, uh, report, we included a description of the projects and the locations of the projects as well as an estimated cost. A copy of that report is attached with your, uh, report for your reference. Uh, since that time, staff has finalized the project scopes as well as prepared the tender documents and issued the, the projects for tender. And the results of, uh, our tendered results are shown on page two of the report. And I have two motions before trustees to consider moving forward with these projects, and I will read them for you. The first recommendation is that we resolve that the Halton Catholic School Board authorize staff to proceed with the proposed 2016 facility renewal projects. And the second motion for your consideration is resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board authorize staff to expense funds from the Facility Renewal Project Reserve for the proposed 2016 facility renewal projects and that that expenditure not exceed $6,240,000.
Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move both resolutions at the same time.
Seconder? Trustee Moray, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Carabella.
I just had a question. If it, if the expenditures would exceed that, does that come back to our board? Just as an information item or?
In the unlikely event that would occur, yes, it would come back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? So moved. Eight point seven, policy I-02, records and information management. Policy I-07, protection of privacy. Policy I-30, video surveillance, second and third reading. Trustee Moray.
Madam Chair, I move the following motion.
Seconder?
Seconded. Can we vote on all, all these three?
Trustee Tomasi?
No.
I just wanted to second it. That's why. Discussion?
Paul, are we moving all three at once?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor? So moved. Policy eight point eight, is it II-41, uniform. Superintendent, trustee Moray.
So this was a, this was a, a discussion item at policy last week and prior weeks, and I would, uh, further move, uh, this motion to, uh, accept, uh, the recommendations.
Who's seconder? Trustee Tomasi, discussion? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I brought this, uh, up during the policy committee meeting, but I wanted to put it in the public forum. The Halton Catholic District School Board Uniform Policy I-41 in its current form presumes to dictate where parents can purchase dress code-compliant apparel by referencing another policy that specifies that the school board must purchase apparel manufactured according to verifiable labor practices. Inciting that policy, which is I-31, the Halton Catholic School Board endeavors to mandate that parents themselves are bound by the board's purchasing policy. That would make a tremendous amount of sense if the school board was indeed purchasing the students' apparel. When it comes to team uniforms and spirit wear, for example, the board is indeed the purchaser. However, when it comes to dress code-compliant items, it is the sole responsibility of the parent to pay for the clothing. Currently, in the elementary school system, only 40% are, are, are wearing, sorry, excuse me, only 60% are, are currently wearing uniforms. So that leaves a further 40% who are not abiding by our own school policies and what they're wearing to school. And neither do we expect the teachers or other staff to comply by our board policy. Why are we demanding that parents comply with our policy regarding, um, fair labor practices and purchasing? The school board encourages students to bring their own device, seemingly without any concern for the many noted labor issues and the massive Asian factories where, uh, youth are employed in egregious work conditions. Neither does the board ensure that the building materials used in the construction of new schools for 21st century learning digital equipment are manufactured in China under the same standards as our uniform suppliers. The board has no verifiable labor standards when it comes to most other aspects of board purchasing, and I don't know why we expect parents to comply with that, that rule. So as I had discussed in policy, I would like to propose an amendment whereby we remove the mandatory sole supplier from our school board uniform dress code policy, perhaps bring it back to policy for future, for further consideration, but that we not, that we not approve the current state of this policy at the full board meeting.
Who has a seconder? Trustee Rowe, discussion? Trustee Rabenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated at the policy committee meeting, uh, last week, Anthony, I'm not opposed to this, but I do think that we have to do it in concert with the study of the policies that are current in our purchasing department. I don't think we should do it in isolation.
Any other questions? Trustee Quinn?
As a follow-up, Madam Chair. In, in the high school system, for example, the, the RJ McCarthy's as the sole source provider has paid back to schools over the last three years, 12, 13, and, and 14. $312,159.67 in royalties to the high schools. So that's equivalent to the parents overpaying $312,159.67 because we have a sole source. So that is my, my biggest concern, and if we approve this process, then it goes out for RFP. We, we, we still refer to our fair labor policy for our RFP, and we're putting parents, we're treating parents as providers, and they are not providers.
Any other comments?
So through you, Madam Chair. If, if we maintain the status quo, then we are going down the same road for a long period of time where we are using dubious policies that we hold to dictate how and where parents spend their money. And, and I think we're doing wrong by our parents and by our community. I'm not opposed to uniforms, just to a sole source provider.
Trustee Tomasi?
Just a quick comment to trustee Quinn. I, I believe we discussed this also, um, at policy, and the concern, of course, is that, um, McCarthy's does cover off those families who cannot afford uniforms. So before we make any changes, we really need to find out where the source of income will come to help these, these families who cannot go out and buy uniforms on their own, and it won't matter who the supplier is or where the store is. So we need to know that we have something in place to look after those people before we go ahead and take away McCarthy's.
Trustee Trice?
Picking up on what Ian, um, trustee Ian Tomasi said, I've heard that perhaps McCarthy's, um, policy on that isn't as clear as we'd like. Would someone be able to comment, one of the superintendents, how that happens? Do people have to self-identify? Does there have to be endorsement by the school to go to McCarthy's? Because I've heard many times that it doesn't work that way.
Superintendent Cipriano?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, McCarthy's does have a process whereby a parent, uh, or sometimes a teacher recognizes a parent speaks to a teacher and the teacher, uh, speaks to the principal on behalf of the parent. It is, it is, uh, a process that is facilitated through the principal to McCarthy's initially. Once that initial co, uh, connection has been made, typically the parents will deal with McCarthy's directly. Uh, there are, there are, um, initial amounts that are given, uh, for free to families for, for, for children in need of uniforms. And if further items are required, uh, it, the, parents can go to principals and principals will, uh, will typically just request more articles from McCarthy's. Uh, and it is, it is fairly seamless. Um, I've been a principal in two schools with uniforms and it, there's never been, uh, any type of, of, uh, challenge or, or delay. Uh, McCarthy's typically responds very quickly and very discreetly with those families.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. If we are providing one company, a sole source, where the payback over the last three years has been $312,159.67, it's no wonder they'll be able to offset the costs of however many families have, have requested that. But when you open up, as the Toronto Catholic District School Board has, to other providers, the market determines what, what, uh, what they, what they can afford to pay. And there are numerous operations that come into, to, uh, into play, whether it be, uh, discounters or high-end stores, or still going to McCarthy's or InDesign or all the other uniform suppliers. Parents will have a choice to spend the money where they are best able to afford to spend it. And then if the school needs to help them as well, principals or, or other funds are available, the schools generate $12 million a year in school-generated funds. The principals have the money to help the families if needed. If not, the board can address it. But I don't think that the solution is providing McCarthy's with a guaranteed market and, and allowing, and forcing the lower-income families to shop there or have to go through the process of applying for a bursary.
Thank you. Um, so we've gone through this at policy, we've gone through this tonight. So I'm gonna call the vote on, uh, trustee Quinn's amendment.
Clarify the amendment, please.
Certainly. Can you clarify your amendment, please?
Thank you. In, in keeping with our commitment to reflect Christian values in our day-to-day lives and to abide by the social teaching of the church and our own mission and vision statement, the Halton Catholic District School Board has implemented a fair labor purchase policy. This requires that all vendors provide assurances that manufacturing of apparel is in keeping with the provisions and procurement of the Fair Labor Practices Agreement. We would request that all school communities consider safe, safe, just, and healthy employment standards wherever and whenever they are shopping. A list of school apparel suppliers will be provided within our policy and will be available on our website. And that's, that's verbatim from the Toronto Catholic District School Board's.
All right. Um, and it was seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Diana, you abstaining? I'm sorry? All right. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson? Trustee Trice?
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda? Trustee Moray?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe? Trustee Quinn?
I shouldn't have asked for the, uh, the reading. What happened?
You didn't vote yet, trustee Quinn.
I'm in favor of my, my vote.
Can I, point of clarification?
I'm sorry?
Just, can I, can I clarify one thing amongst staff? And that is, do we not have a policy on the books that only allow, that, that specifically states that, uh, we do, we do not have student, uh, late, like, student labor practices on the books and, and through the RFP process, uh, that has been, that has been outlined that McCarthy's was the only RFP, uh, that was able to meet our requirements on that request?
Yes. We discussed it at policy. All right. What's, uh, trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, just a point of order. A policy amendment requires two-thirds, I believe. Could be wrong.
I'm sorry, that motion or amendment failed. So back to the original motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept, accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve II-41 uniform as amended. All in, okay, let's call it. Trustee Carabella?
So opposed, right?
I don't know.
I mean to be consistent.
Now we're on the main.
Trustee Trice, oh, I'm sorry, Jackson.
Opposed.
We're on the main policy now.
We're on the, it's the original policy.
It's the original policy committee.
In, in favor. Can I, can I make a clarification? Is this the main policy the policy committee has already passed?
This is the one that we passed at policy.
The entire whole of this committee, the whole of this group is on?
Everybody voted for it, yeah. Trustee Tomasi?
I'm gonna give my head a shake. I, I'm in favor as, as it is.
Trustee Danko? Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
I have a question, point of order, Madam Chair. If it requires two-thirds to, to approve a change...
This is an amendment, though.
If it requires two-thirds to approve a change of policy, we're changing this policy, it's being updated. It, does it require two-thirds to change the policy? If it goes one way, if it goes for your, for, in, on your side, it's, uh, not simply you. If it goes on your side, it's two-thirds, and if it's against you, it's, it's a majority of the vote? What is the rule?
It wasn't two-thirds, though.
But what was the ruling that when trustee Danko made his point of order and said, "It takes two-thirds to change a policy," you agreed?
Amendment.
So this is an amended policy. This, this has gone through...
And it takes two-thirds to change it.
So is that what we're voting?
Two-thirds vote.
I do not approve that. I vote against.
I'm gonna go. I'm going to go again. Trustee Carabella? So opposed, so opposed.
Like, is this the main one now?
Yes.
Yeah, I said in favor, sorry.
In favor. Okay. Does everybody understand that this is the resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve II/II/IVI Uniform as amended? This is the same thing we discussed last Tuesday. Trustee Trice?
Opposed.
Trustee Rabenda? Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favors.
Opposed.
Or four. I will vote. Sorry? I'm in favor.
Did it pass?
Yes, it passed.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to eight point nine, policy one, governance of policy. Trustee Marai?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee on governance.
Seconded. Justine Tomasi, discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Moving on to staff reports, religious education resource selection. And we have with us tonight Terry Durham and Anne Jamison.
Thank you, madam chair. I wanted to just welcome this evening Director for the Office of Catechesis for the Diocese of Hamilton, Anne Jamison, and our consultant Terry Durham with responsibilities for religion and family life, as we prepare to recommend the purchase of the Grade Two and Grade Three Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ Complete Print and Digital District Implementation Package to support the implementation of the Grade One to Eight Religious Education Program. We thought it would be a good idea for you to see what the Grade Ones have been doing with the approval from last year. So welcome, Anne and Terry.
Thank you, madam chair. A little history about the video that you're about to see. As we're putting forward our information report on the purchase of the Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ Grade Two and Three program, I was asked to come and show you some of the components of the program. And since the components of the program and... Since the components of the program of the Grade One are the same components, although the content is different, I thought it would be more interesting for you to see it in action. So I actually dropped into a class, I literally dropped into a class. They did not know that I was coming, and they were having their religion education class. And I asked the principal and the teachers, and especially the students, if I could film them while they had their religion class. And they agreed, and they had their necessary publicity permission forms. So we went ahead. So I'm telling you that so that you know that these things that you're seeing the students talk about and do is a completely authentic lesson that has... They've not been coached, it's not scripted, it's completely coming from what they do every day. And after we filmed the class, I asked the teachers if they would talk to you through video about their opinions of the Grade One program. And they agreed, and so their pieces are also unscripted, uncoached, unstructured. It is their authentic feelings about the program. So I really encourage you, as we're watching this video, to really pay attention to the things the students are saying and doing. I think you're going to be very excited to see what wonderful fruits the purchase of the Grade One brought in our classrooms, and excited to think about how much more those possibilities are going to expand with the purchase of Grade Two and Three. So without further ado, I'm just going to play the video for you.
Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ, the Spirit of God shines so bright, with love in our hearts, we are children of love. Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ.
I'm just very interested in what you find good about the program, or appealing about the program, or important about the program.
Everything.
Okay.
It's funny, because if you talk to some of the staff here, they think that I'm promoting the program, or, you know, because we're always talking about how great and relevant it is.
Can I just jump in there? Because I think it's important to point out, like, where do you see that background knowledge in the program?
Oh, the beginning of each unit, it says for your background. So it gives you, I mean, things that we know and things that, you know, we've been taught over the years, but it gives us proper phrasing, and it clarifies questions. All right, who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation?
What does evil temptation mean?
That's a good question!
Yeah. Because it says do not lead us in... Because it says not, so we must not...
Okay, so do you think temptation is a good thing or a bad thing?
Bad, but what does it mean?
Temptation, it's thinking about doing something or being led to do something we shouldn't do. So it doesn't have to be evil things, but it might just be something we shouldn't do.
Make a bad choice?
A bad choice, yes. Help us not make a bad choice. Let you say, that's a very good way to put it back.
I think it's very user-friendly, and that's really good. It's very comprehensive. We found the old program has just had so many gaps, and we had to supplement as teachers, which isn't always the best situation. So it's comprehensive, it has so many, it's so in-depth, so you can get as in-depth as you want. And the other thing, too, is because it is laid out the way that it is, like, when we talk to other teachers, we've been said to them, it doesn't matter what grade you teach, you can probably take what we're doing and adapt it for your grade level, because it's just that in-depth. And I really like the fact that it has a lot of scripture embedded in it, a lot of references to parables and stories of the...
Just like in The Prodigal Son. What happened in The Prodigal Son?
His dad forgives him.
Okay, why did he forgive him? Remember, we talked about...
Because he spent all his money for useless things.
Okay. So we learned how the dad just forgave him. Why did the dad forgive him? Jacob, why did the dad forgive him?
Because he came back, because he gave back.
So they're getting a lot of, not only are they learning about the church and the church traditions, there is a really strong church connection, which was absent in the previous program, so... And then now when we go to church with the class, the kids are pointing out stuff, they're noticing stuff, they're understanding what we're doing in the Mass, they're understanding why these symbols are there, what they represent. So that's been really, really good for them as well. And but I like the scripture piece, the Bible pieces, so it really allows us to bring our Bible into the lessons, which is something that was missing before as well. And I think that's really important, is to make the connection for them between this is why we do what we do, so there's a story that goes along with it, Jesus said this, and God said this, and this is why we believe what we believe. So I think it's a really nice way to connect it, especially considering a lot of our students, or my students anyways, don't regularly attend church or Mass. So it's nice to be able to give them that experience and that foundation.
It also makes them want to go to Mass.
Yeah, it does. They enjoy it more, and they participate more.
And they understand it more. I think some of the, like, not only the parables that they've discussed, but even the saints. And I think that came up today, too, is the students are excited to learn about the saints and why they're a saint. And the student book, it's laid out so nicely for them. It's simple, but it gives them enough information that it's encouraging them to ask questions and to understand, oh, this was Saint Matthew, like, this is what he did. But also other saints. I think you've heard them mention, like, Saint Bernadette, and...
It was close to...
I like seeing the saints. I like seeing the saints.
The saints?
Yeah.
It was by one hundred. It was by one hundred.
They, like, they tell you how they were made, they were made to be saints, and they tell you stories of how that person became a saint.
Yes. I like, I find a lot of you like to read about the saints in this book.
Like Saint Bernadette, Saint Vincent.
And who were we reading about last week that surprised us? Well, what was the saint name?
Oh, Matthew.
Saint Matthew, that's right. What did you learn about Saint Matthew?
That he collected taxes, and people didn't like, didn't like him that much because he didn't care about anything else, he just wanted to collect the money. But then one day, Jesus came to him and said to...
And explained.
And said, "Follow me," and then they had, they ate, and he invited other tax collectors.
And what did the people say when they saw that?
They said to Jesus, "Why are you, why are you having, why are you eating with those mean people?"
Yes! Why? Why did that surprise them?
Because...
Sorry.
Because Jesus was eating what the people in other nations...
Okay. Yes. Jordan, what did you want to ask about?
Because they were bad people, and they were jealous that they were eating with him, and they were eating with bad people.
Well, they thought, they looked at those people as bad people, right? But did Jesus think they were bad people?
No! Jesus never thinks anyone's bad.
And then, of course, Pope Francis. They were so excited when Pope Francis, because the program is so current and relevant to them, they understand that, you know, this is the Year of Mercy, and what that means, and the prayer that he wrote is, you know, we discussed in class, and they're excited about it. And Jesus is gone. If we look at... If you look at all of the things that we do with the Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ program, what are some of the things that you like about it?
I like singing the songs.
Okay.
I like hearing the stories and singing the songs.
Okay. Some of the stories, which are the stories that you like most?
Like all the brother Francis ones.
Okay, say that nice and loud.
Like all the brother Francis ones.
Yes. Brother Francis, you seem to like most of his videos.
One thing we really enjoy about the program, too, is the fact that there's so many cross-curricular connections we can make. So it's really been, we've been teaching our social studies and our religion kind of side by side, because there's a lot of crossover. And at the beginning of each unit, it has an outline, so it lets you know what expectations are in other curriculum areas of your grade that you can combine with those, so you're tackling more than just one expectation at a time, and you're crossing over to different curriculum areas, so that's been a really good thing as well.
So one way that we remember that is through the Lord's Prayer. Who knows? Let's just go back. Who knows what the Lord's Prayer is? What's the Lord's Prayer? Jacob?
Our Father.
That's right. Today we're going to, um... Today we're going to look at the words of the Lord's Prayer, because a lot of us say the Lord's Prayer. But I want us to...
I say it every single, um, in the morning and in the nighttime.
But I want us to think about what some of those words are. So I'm going to put it up here, we're going to try it together, and we'll see if we can put it in order. So how does the Lord's Prayer start? What's the first line? Jacob?
Our Father.
Our Father. So we need to find the word "Father" and move that up in there. You can do that for me. All right.
Do that.
Yeah, it's okay. There we go. Good. And can you hit the... Can you reach it, something?
Father.
Sorry, the first one. Yes.
Our, who art in heaven.
Okay. So our Father...
...digital component, the kids are really excited about that. They live in a very 21st century society, so being able to have the video clips and have the songs, they love to sing the songs, and... And the way the books are laid out, like she says, they're current, so they see the diversity in the society reflected backwards. If you saw the old books, it was very dated, so even the characters are from all different nationalities. And it usually takes place in a classroom, and it's a teacher talking to the students, so it's a very real thing that they can take. It's not like they have to really be abstract about it. It's very, you know, transparent and very easy for them to make connections to what's in the textbooks, so that's really good for them.
Well, one of the students was saying today, the one thing they like is the stories in the student book. And it's because those stories show children like them that they can relate to, and they understand all of a sudden this story, and they see themselves in it. And I think a lot of this program, they do see themselves in. The Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ books, what do you like about these student books?
That they teach us new things.
Okay. What else do you like? Why do you like to look... What do you like to look about in them?
The stories.
Like which stories? Can you think of one that you always go to when you go through the book?
Normally, like the kid ones.
Okay. Yeah, some of them, they have, in this book, are children, boys and girls your age, in classrooms just like ours. So it's easy for you to relate to those stories, isn't it? You know who else? Who's in this book that we are so surprised to see?
Brother Francis.
No. I mean, Pope Francis, that's right. Pope Francis is in here. And what were we surprised to see about Pope Francis in here? His prayer. But I think the one thing, you know, the cross-curricular connections are good, but they come naturally. Like during centers, we can put up the, some of those activities we're doing today, and then they can do it on their own, and it's reading, it's oral, it's media literacy, and it just happens naturally. It's not something that I'm looking to do... Yeah, inauthentically. It's putting Catholicity into your bay. In a way that's natural and flows for the students. And it's throughout the day. It's not like we just have, I mean, we do have our religion class time, but it's not by itself. It's not isolated. It's helping us walk the walk, which is the point of being in a Catholic school. It gives us those tools, it gives us the resources, and it's all at your fingertips. I love that I can pull it up, my learning goal is there, and I click on this, the big poster is there. And I have the other parts of the program, which are great, because the students want the time to look through the big books on their own, or they'll refer back to the posters during the day. But having that digital piece makes it accessible and user-friendly, and for me as a teacher, it just simplifies implementing it. Yeah, it's honestly, it has been the best tool that's come in, that I've seen come in, because to me, it's really made our faith relevant, it's really brought Catholicity back into the classroom in a way that students love, they're engaged, it's current, it's relevant. And it's enjoy, I love teaching it.
No, it makes it very enjoyable to teach religion, to be honest with you. It takes all the guesswork out of it, it's very easy for us, and like I said, there's so many tools the kids really enjoy. I also like the fact that there's also always embedded in it some differentiation pieces, so there's little side bits on how you can differentiate certain activities. There's also little side bits on how you could incorporate meditation or different types of prayer. And I think it exposes to kids, too, also to the idea that prayer and our time with God isn't just relegated to one thing, it encompasses so many things, like we can worship through song, we can worship through prayer, we can worship through our time at Mass, we can worship just being still and just spending time going through the scripture, and God's Word is what God is expecting from us.
You know what, Diana? Why don't we go back? And we're going to go back, there is a video with this, too. So we're going to just click on our video. Jesus teaches us to pray.
At the beginning of every unit, you have the "I wonder" section, and you can, you know, you get to review, and you get their questions, and throughout you can add the questions that they have, because it does really open itself up for discussion, and one thing will spark questions that they have about something else. So it's an opportunity to also, you know, record those questions and go back and revisit those questions throughout the unit. And as a teacher, it's a good way for you to determine where it is that they have misunderstandings or misconceptions, or where they just don't have any knowledge at all, maybe you want to go... or where they just don't have any knowledge at all, maybe you want to go in a little bit deeper in those sections. But I like the way it opens up with the inquiry piece, and then it closes off, and I like the learning goals of the beginning of each lesson, so the kids know where we're going, we know where we're going with it, and it's a really good way to kind of consolidate at the end of the time together.
Um, Cameron.
Where's heaven?
Where's heaven?
In the sky.
High in the sky. My uncle died in the sky.
I like, I like how Cameron is listening to Jacob, but let's have a discussion. Where do you think heaven is?
It's up in the space.
Okay.
But it's very simple, it's very easy to put into practice, and-
It's fun.
It is, it's, yeah. It's a nice time of day, and they really enjoy it. It's, they really enjoy it.
Why? It's, it's really my favorite part.
It's a nice way to end the day or begin the day.
Okay, so that, uh, gives you a really good overview of all of the benefits that the students are getting out of the program, and all of the religious knowledge that they're building, and you could see how much they could recall from what they've learned this year, and how excited they are to be engaged in religion. And although I filmed one class, I'm getting, um, this kind of feedback from all our teachers all over the board, how excited they are, um, to have this Grade One program. So I brought, uh, the Grade Two program here. I know you're not going to have a chance to look at it now, but, um, I'm going to leave it here for you if you want to have a browse at the end of the day. And I've also have some testimonials from other teachers, if you care to look at those as well. And, um, and Anna, or sorry, the, uh, information report is attached with all the information you need about the Grade Two and Three programs. So I'm just going to turn it over to Ann to close for us.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Um, I'm here in part to bring a perspective, uh, from the Diocese. It's one of the great pleasures of my role in the Diocese, that I get to visit all of our boards and see this amazing program rolled out in many contexts. So you're seeing one classroom here. I see many in many different places, and I want to tell you that the kinds of things that these teachers are saying on this video are exactly what I hear in classrooms over and over again, Hanover and Concordan, Cambridge and Waterloo, in Hamilton, and many points in between. Teachers are absolutely thrilled with this new program. Teachers are saying very courageous things about the ways in which this program, um, is helping them to learn about their faith again, to become re-engaged in, uh, new ways. They're excited to see this program informing their literacy parts of their day, social studies parts of their day, arts parts of their day. They love the way that it's integrating throughout their day, and, uh, many teachers report that, uh, religion is spilling over in lovely ways throughout the entire day. They're finding that there's theological education there for them, but more importantly, deep spiritual renewal. Every teacher I speak to in Grade One and Two in boards where Two has already been implemented speak of deep, personal, spiritual renewal thanks to this program. The children are, um, in the Halton Board are just as brilliant as the children in other boards I visit. I'm glad to see that. I knew that was true. I'm amazed by six-year-olds who are recounting salvation history to me, amazed by six-year-olds who are telling me how important the incarnation is, why is it that Mary is able to say yes to God's great, um, request of her to bear his son? It's amazing to me the amount of information that they are able to recall, but also their level of engagement and joy in this program. And in my role as the Director of Catechesis for the Diocese, I'm also responsible for helping our pastors to become aware of the theological content and the structure of this program, and the ways in which it impacts, um, their catechetical work with young people as well. And pastors report spontaneously to me that their interactions in classrooms, in Grade One classrooms, are blowing their minds. They can't believe what children are talking to them about, what they're asking them about, what they already know about. They love that the children are learning about saints and want to engage them with questions about those things, questions about their liturgical vestments. The priests are really surprised by these things and delighted. I think this program offers so many opportunities for again renewal in parish school relationships and strengthening of the already great work that is being done. Pedagogically, I don't think, um, anyone could actually overstate the value of this program, um, its comprehensiveness, its integration, uh, its multifacetedness, its ability to reach the 21st century learner. I think all of those things from a pedagogical point of view are remarkable. Uh, but the evangelizing potential of this program, um, cannot be underestimated either. I think the gift you are giving the students in your board in supporting this program is certainly the gift to a generation, but I believe very strongly that you are actually providing a gift for generations to come for the body of Christ. So it is a delight to be with you. Thank you for letting me be here this evening, and I'm just really pleased to watch the rollout of this. The most difficult thing about what I do is talking to Grade Three and Four and Five teachers and say, "Hang on, it's coming. The greatness is coming your way. I promise," because they're dying to get a new program in their hands. Thanks.
Trustees have any questions of, yes, trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps to, to Superintendent, uh, so we're looking at a price of half a million dollars for this program for, for the second iteration. We've already spent to, to have this program installed in our schools, approximately half a million dollars. For the full rollout, we're looking at four million dollars, and if you at the Diocese are encouraging other boards to take that up, we're looking at, what is it, sixteen million dollars that Pearson will be making through the sale of these books? So as wonderful as the kids are, are in that video, could the Diocese and the boards not have gotten together and for sixteen, for a sixteen million dollar investment, provided this and more, rather than relying on a third party who will, a single-sourced third party who comes to us with this program, and it's the only option we're given, to purchase at, it's at extraordinary rates, at a thousand dollars per teacher, per teacher, uh, resource, and sixty dollars for a softcover printed book? So Anna, uh, can you tell me what other options there are for us, rather than spending four million dollars on this program?
I don't know that we have explored other options. It's the Canadian Catholic Conference of Bishops that has approved the program. The collaboration with Pearson is something that they have established for us, and they have, um, a history of, uh, using a particular publishing, uh, firm and dealing with them. So it's almost a question that's, I don't know how to begin to answer, um, because it is something that, uh, we haven't produced ourselves and haven't looked at producing ourselves, and have always supported and taken the recommendation of the bishops in, uh, the purchase of these programs.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps to, are any of the, uh, the Conference of Bishops or, uh, any staff at the Diocese participating in remuneration for either working on this program? Were they paid by Pearson in any way, or are they being paid as, for promoting this to other boards?
Uh, I certainly wouldn't be aware whether bishops receive any compensation from Pearson. I, I don't have any information about that. There are, um, dozens of people who contribute to the writing and the reviewing of this work. Um, I'm actually the parish specialist, parish relationship specialist listed in the program. I believe in the Grade One and the Grade Two, uh, program, and, uh, so I did provide writing samples and was remunerated for those writing samples with the approval of my bishop. Um, I'm one of dozens of people who do. I am not paid to promote, I'm not here paid to promote, uh, Pearson. I'm not here promoting a company. I was here, asked here, um, to talk about what the experience around the Diocese has been.
I think it's important to note that, um, Pearson did invite, uh, religious educators, priests, religious education consultants, teachers, and bishops from all over Ontario to contribute to the program. So in essence, this is the program that gathered everyone together to create. People who were contributing writers have gotten paid. No one gets royalties. So, uh, there's no investment by any of the writers as to whether the books sit on a shelf or whether they go out. Um, I will tell you that everyone who has contributed to the program has a, that I've encountered, has a very strong belief in Catholic education, and, and that's the reason they're doing it. They're not doing it to get paid. Uh, they're doing it because they love Catholic education. They love, um, our province of Ontario and the great gift we have in Catholic education, and they all feel that they're part of something, um, big and strong that's guided by the Holy Spirit to, um, evangelize our children in the province. And I, I can faithfully attest that that's the highest motivation that everyone that I have met has for working on the program. Anything else? I want to thank you very much for taking your time. Thank you, Teri, and thank you, Ann. It's always great to hear you and see you.
Thank you.
Uh, nine point two kindergarten outdoor learning enhancement plan, Superintendent Corvaccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Superintendent Anna Porcassino and myself, we're pleased to present to the trustees this evening the kindergarten outdoor learning enhancement, uh, plan that we've, uh, developed. Um, it's, it's kind of a first phase or a component of our LEAP program that we introduced our trustees to back in early of 216. And LEAP consists of many components, and this is just one of them. And this evening, we're going to have two presenters, Jill Staples from, uh, our curriculum consultants early years, and Steve Allen, he's our manager of energy and environmental for our board. And I also want to acknowledge, who couldn't be here this evening, is Graham Watkins, who's looked after our playgrounds diligently and tried to make them patch and get over the years, and hopefully this will resolve it. And also I want to point out Alex Duffield and Ryan Merrick for their oversight of this project. So it's been quite a team effort. So our, our proposal to do now is I'll let Jill go through more of the curriculum component of it, and then Steve's going to give the more technical, and then I'll wrap it up with the budget and implementation strategy.
Thank you. Uh, we have presented a PowerPoint for you as well, so some of the information you'll be able to follow through, um, related on the slides. And I just wanted to start off by framing it in the, uh, context of our curriculum for the Full Day Kindergarten program. And we know that that program is rooted in play and inquiry, because that is especially important for young children as it develops their problem-solving skills, the language acquisition, literacy, numeracy, and play supports that social and emotional, physical, and intellectual and spiritual development in children as well. Just let you take a second to read this, uh, quote from Pope Francis from La D'Atosie. And it helps to again frame our program. It clearly addresses in the program the importance of environmental education and outdoor play. Engaging in nature is important for developing, um, religion, math, science, learning, is an authentic and meaningful way. Collaboration skills, critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, creativity, innovation, and empathy are all skills that the children need to be successful in the world we live in, and engaging with nature supports and develops these important skills. We tend to view everything that we're doing in this context with our view of the child. And I think most of us would agree that our view of the child is a child who is capable and competent of complex thinking, curious, and creative thinkers and problem solvers. And because we believe in this, we want to provide experiences for both indoor and outdoor learning, for them to be able to grow and to develop in self-regulation, creativity, innovation, and develop that sense of belonging and well-being, as well as those literacy and mathematics behaviors. If you look at this diagram here, it talks about the different roam rates that have happened, let's say from, um, our great-grandparents down to our children today. And our great-grandparents had an opportunity to travel up to seven miles from home on their own independently. Uh, whereas now, when we look at the roam rates for children, it's that little dot up at the top, uh, left side, where we allow children to roam about three hundred yards. So if we think of our best experiences we had as children, most of us will say it was the fact that we were out to play until the streetlights went on, or until we heard somebody call. We were able to play with friends, to travel far from home, to develop that sense of independence, to, uh, take risks that we might not have been able to otherwise, and we, we, um, had that sense of belonging with our community as well. But we know for a number of reasons, um, children today don't have those opportunities and experiences to develop that, uh, risk-taking and that self-regulation and curiosity and problem-solving in the same way. So by creating these outdoor experiences for children through our outdoor playgrounds, we're hoping to give them some of those opportunities that they haven't had, uh, in the same way, because of the opportunities to be independent and, um, our, our roam rates are just so much smaller now. So the current play structures that we have in place right now, uh, we know that we've had problems with them in the past, that they're difficult to get parts for now and other issues. But one of the problems connected with play is that the child who is physically capable and has gross motor development is the first one up at the top of that climber, and once they're up there, they tend to control the play. And the other children who aren't, uh, gross motor kids, for instance, kind of sit around in the periphery, and they don't really have a lot to do. So if we consider the importance of developing the whole child, the natural play spaces provides the opportunity for them to build those strengths and needs in other areas. So the child who, um, might be developing and more prone to, uh, small motor activities or to quiet activities, when we have the outdoor play spaces, we are engaging and supporting a variety of children. So it's very important for these spaces that we're developing. We have a place that, uh, meets all their sensory needs as well. So you can see from some of the images there, the, the touch and smell and taste and sight and sound. Naturalized play spaces appeal to all the senses, which is not only important for young children, but it also gives them that sense of wonder that we all had as children in that ability to travel and have those longer roam rates. Um, and it also gives them that opportunity to start to think about, um, the natural world and caring for the natural world. In this slide, you'll see some children digging in the mud and playing with bugs. When we have our, the climbers, the climber has a very one-focused activity. And usually, once the kids go down a slide once, there's not a lot else to do. So what they tend to do is figure out other crazy ways of getting up the slide. So they'll go down backwards, or they'll climb up the side of the slide, but it doesn't offer any other play value really other than that. But by providing these natural outdoor experiences for children, we see a huge change in the play value. Um, a few years ago, a gentleman by the name of Richard Louve coined the term a nature deficit, because we're finding by children not having those opportunities to engage in nature, they're missing out those, the, um, experiences that allow them to explore and to develop that sense of wonder, as well as, uh, independence, creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving. So giving the kids an opportunity to dig in the mug, mud, and to find bugs, and to do that exploration and discovery is really important for their growth and development. We know from all of the media that we're hearing about the high rates of obesity among children today, uh, they're not getting those, uh, chances to go outside and to play and to run around. And we know that that's leading to a number of health issues such as heart disease and diabetes. And this is the first generation of children who will not live as long as their parents. They're going to have a shorter lifespan because of all of these, um, health-related issues. So in this slide, you'll just notice some of the activities that, um, the spaces support. There's places for, uh, fine motor and sensory development, so those are some children playing in the sand with, um, uh, sorry, uh, kind of like tunnels that are cut from wood, so they're made from natural materials. Um, there's an outdoor learning area there, so an opportunity to take the children outside to extend the learning that they're doing indoors and continue to develop that sense of, uh, inquiry and wonder. Um, you'll see in that bottom corner, what they're called, they're called wacky posts, and there's a tarp laid over the wacky post to, uh, And there's a tarp laid over the wacky post to support dramatic play and the children can play underneath there. It also provides shade, which is nice. And the spiral bench is a great place to sit and read quietly or to do some quiet exploration. But in the winter, it's a great place to dig out and to make an igloo. I don't expect you to read everything on the slide. I just put it there so you start to see all the different research that's there on the benefits of children in outdoor play. And one of the most recent ones is connected to Attention Deficit Disorder. And the research found that children that have an opportunity to engage in nature, their symptoms are far reduced. In fact, if children spend 90 minutes a day connecting to the natural world, children with Attention Deficit Disorder, 70% of them no longer need to take Ritalin. So there's lots of research that's quite interesting around the benefits to children. Studies of children in the schoolyard found that children engage in more creative forms of play in green areas. They also played more cooperatively. And the play in natural especially is important for developing capacities for creativity, problem-solving, and intellectual development. And the other thing that play is really important for in the outdoors is because it helps to children to take some risks and understand about risk. Children don't have that, they don't have that opportunity, then as they grow up, they have a really hard time determining what is safe risk and what is risky play. So by getting them what we call learning injuries, they fall and get a little bump or a bruise, children understand how to negotiate their space better and how to take risks in using that space.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a few minutes here to highlight the design process and propose implementation strategy for this year's kindergarten natural play spaces, which is covered in greater detail in the staff report. In 2015, the Oakville YMCA engaged a design-built consultant to transform two of their childcare center playgrounds at St. Luke and St. Marguerite Viewville Schools into a natural play space area. At both schools, cost and schedule savings were realized by the board piggybacking with similar projects at the adjacent kindergarten areas. And during those 2015 kindergarten projects, a team of school representatives provided input into the design of the new play spaces. Here we can see one of them, St. Luke, a before and after photo. You can see the original climber on the left and the natural play space on the right. I could point out a few components in the right side there, which is in the foreground. You can see the outdoor learning area. There is an artificial turf and sort of the gathering area in the median foreground. Sand play with log borders on the right and what Jill lovingly referred to as the wacky posts in the back corner there. For the design of the 2016 natural play spaces, a strategy was formulated using last year's play space project as a foundation. It included input from schools being vital when designing a new natural play space. It's helpful in determining how the current space is used and the priorities for a new play space. It was also felt that streamlining and if possible standardizing the design approach would result in more effective collaboration between school, consultant, and board personnel. We also sought to increase the number and size of plantings, larger trees and are more resistant to everyday wear and tear and can provide appreciable shade right after planting. And finally, the play space budgets must account for the current kindergarten's spaces' size and condition. Bean and Stock was engaged due to their experience in natural play spaces and their alignment with the board's aforementioned design strategy. Examples include pod-based design methodology, which I'll get into in a second. Streamline the initial design meetings with a standard menu of items schools could choose from. A more-is-more philosophy whereby planting trees and shrubs in greater quantities and sizes lessens the burden on any one individual planting. A pragmatic approach to play space design, so natural components and servicing will break down wherewithal and thus require maintenance, but ultimately is more cost-effective and feasible to maintain a natural play space than a traditional plastic metal post and platform playground. And finally, ability to create construction documents to be used for competitive tendered bids. So here we can see the pods themselves. A pod is a pre-divine grouping of natural play space features. So in the top left there, your report, by the way, has all the various examples of the pods. I'll just show a small cross-section here. Sideways tree on the top left is a tree section with fully engineered concrete footings, safety surface included installed below it. Sand play pod there is, you can see various areas to sit along the border. A tree is included in the pod for shade immediately, a chalkboard, and designed, sorry, and a cabinet stocked with items suitable for sand play. You can see there on the left side of the sand area. The gardening pod, top left, includes the planter boxes, another stock gardening cabinet, chalkboard, and designed to fit in a corner away from the active play areas. And the learning amphitheater in the bottom right plantings behind it are included. And in our cases, we also added a chalkboard. And it also can act as an active play feature when not being used as an amphitheater. Fourteen play pods were created in total. A school-appointed steering committee selected the pods for their respective kindergarten outdoor learning play space. Once the play space had been designed by Bean and Stock, follow-up meetings were held several weeks later with the steering committee again to review and confirm the play space design via 3D renderings and a fly-through video. So what kind of materials can make up a natural play space? You can see some pictures here. Draw your attention to top left, which is a product known as Duralon. All sodded areas in the natural play spaces will be covered with this product. It is meant to act as both an impact-rated surface and protect the grass from wear. Engineered wood fiber and cedar mulch are in the bottom right-hand corner. You can see logs and the sand in the bottom left. This would be a concept plan of a completed natural play space. Can point out some of the pods integrated into a completed area. There's a sand play pod in the middle, amphitheater just below it. It's hard to see, but there's some activity panels on the left there adjacent to the asphalt. And like I said, all the sodded areas will be covered with that Duralon. Accessibility. All natural play spaces will be compliant with the Accessibility for Ontario's with Disabilities Act. And accessible pathways will be provided to at least one active play and one sensory feature. If we go back to this concept here, we can show the outdoor classroom there also will double as an active play feature. And you can see a strip of Duralon, which is an accessible surface leading over to it to provide accessibility. And the active panels border the asphalt areas, so they're accessible as well. I can't really see that, but you can see it here on that picture. A portion of the log border is cut away. That's a barrier-free log border such that mobility aids can be wheeled up to that and right to the sand area. All natural play spaces will be also in compliance with CSA Z614-14, Children's Play Spaces and Equipment. A third-party qualified inspector will ensure compliance of the completed natural play space and annually thereafter. For OSB, a liability insurance and claims coverage, compliance with the CSA standards are mandatory, as are the annual inspections. Finally, maintenance. Materials in outdoor learning play spaces have been chosen to minimize maintenance as much as possible. For example, as I mentioned, Duralon prevents wear on grass surfaces due to high traffic. Any log components, hardwood and cedar species, were used for their hardiness and longevity. The maintenance for the play space will include daily, weekly, monthly, and annual inspections as per the board's kindergarten playground safety guidelines. Maintaining the loose surfaces such as the mulch and the sand areas, as well as sections of the grass and turf. Tree inspection and care, and preparing the space and surfaces for winter.
So you can obviously read the cost breakdown, but it's in your report. And essentially, what we've itemized and we've tendered each of the schools in this first phase, and it's approximately $1.34 million in construction costs and with our professional fees contingencies, and of course, the net HSD. The total project cost for this first phase is $1.71 million. That cost is covered mostly by the ministry's FDK grant that we've had for some time, and we're expending the final dollars of that grant. And the remainder is coming of $585,000 from our school new reserve. And the next slide will indicate the, again, in your package as well, but it shows our proposed implementation plan. At this point, though, we're only doing the 215-16 projects and the Holy Rosary and the North Oakville Preserve projects, which will be done later this summer as well because they're part of a school capital grant that we currently have. The other projects are there. They're only approximations. It'll depend on availability of funds, and of course, it'll be brought back to our trustees for further consideration. So as far as our next steps will be, is that we'll be back hopefully at the next board meeting, and we'll bring forward the formal recommendations to approve the projects that you have in your package and also to receive your approval to expend $1.71 million. And we'd be pleased to answer any questions that trustees may have on this proposal.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I had a question about the CSA safety standards you mentioned quickly. Have all the products that we've seen in these designs been approved? That sideways tree looked like a lot of trouble for kindergartens to me. And secondarily, when Jill mentioned the dominant student climbing to the top, what is provided for that type of student in the natural play place?
On the sideways tree, the simple answer is yes. They are CSA-approved. The design itself is CSA-approved, and then the inspection that happens when the final product is all together. We'll point out any deficiencies, but that sideways tree in and of itself as a pod is approved.
And to answer your question about the play, if you look at those spaces, there is a space for a child who is gross motor, which would be the sideways tree, and also the logs. The sensory areas, like the sand area, provide the sensory experience as well as fine motor. And then those wacky posts provide an opportunity for dramatic play as well. So the areas were designed to support all the different learning styles of children.
Trustee Carabella.
This looks really wonderful, and it also looks like it would be a great school-community fundraising project. Is there a way to partner with the schools that they can be involved in raising some funds?
We would much welcome any support we get financially from a school. As part of this process, what we've done is when we approach these communities, we ask them if they could do some fundraising to enhance their particular playground. We're still trying to work out those fine details for some of them. Unfortunately, a number of our schools were not able to provide any funding, and others were able to get a grant, and that was helpful in providing an extra feature for that school. But on a go-forward basis, that's probably a strategy we're going to have to look into because the cost of doing the remaining projects will be substantial.
Trustee Marai.
Through you, Madam Chair. Why such a large differential between the lowest budget estimate and the highest, which is double? Is that because of the specific spaces or is that because of the recommendations of the people you consulted with at the schools themselves?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Marai. It's a combination of a number of factors, the two you've pointed out. The condition of the existing kindergarten playground, some were in worse condition than others. Others were a clean slate, which made it easier to work with. Some schools have six kindergartens, so require a larger kindergarten. Others have only two kindergarten rooms. So it varied, and we tried to be as fair and equitable as we could with everyone else. The key to what we did was Jill and Steve and Graham went out and met with the school community, met with the principal, met with the kindergarten teachers, even had school council representatives, and they all took part in the process along with Bean and Stock to help develop these individual pods for their school. And Bean and Stock was very cooperative and collaborative because of their experience with a number of their installations in the past. So when we went back with them at least two times, if not three times, we wanted to make sure that they reviewed and confirmed that this is what they would accept and they'd be happy with it. We don't want any buyer remorse to them because although they weren't buying anything, they were receiving the installation.
Before we go any further, we will have to have a vote on going past 10 o'clock. Mover, Trustee Marai, seconded by Trustee Rabenda, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Moving on to 10.1, the Student Trustee Update. Jackson Ormanuela.
All right. So to start off with our general update, Chloe and Manuela will be attending OCSTA AGM next weekend. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend. I couldn't get work scheduled off. But they're super excited, and I'm going to miss all my friends that are going. I'm going to miss them, but they should have fun. Also, next Tuesday, we have our student trustee elections. They're at Holy Trinity. Yeah. So that's next week. I think they start at 5:30. And so Manuela is running again for a second term, so we're rooting for her. And we're finalizing our planning for our Catholic Education Week initiatives with the help of the senators at each of our schools. And then under the pillar of believing, religion classes from Notre Dame and Bishop Reading are going on class retreats. Notre Dame is also purchasing a new processional crucifix. Corpus is having a Green Day cleanup, practicing stewardship of the earth. School chapels are open for prayer as usual, and St. Thomas Aquinas Chapel is also offering group meditation sessions. And with that, I will pass it on to Manuela for achieving and belonging.
Okay, so under the pillar of belonging, Notre Dame's global outreach is having a pizza sale for after-school to fund donations to the Covenant House. Different schools are hosting their semi-formals. Carnivals are taking place at Jean Vagnier. Pink Cities are being held for bullying awareness, and different schools had their best buddies' hoop-it-up free throw contest, which actually the winner could win up to $500. So that was pretty cool, seeing all the basketball players come out. And in achieving, different peer tutorings are being held, homework clubs are being offered. Notre Dame's block trial team will be competing in regionals next week. Career Day for Grade 10s are being hosted. Assumptions' annual clothing drive was once again a success, and teachers and students collaborate in assessing midterm learning skills.
Thank you. Do any of the trustees have any questions? Trustee Quinn.
I just wanted to ask, through you, Madam Chair, how the process of the student trustee election takes place. If you are at St. Thomas Aquinas, how do you get elected? Is it amongst Oakville High Schools or is it a school-wide election?
All right. So the way the elections work is each school puts forward one candidate that's going to represent their school, and then we break it apart into the three regions. We do the north region, that's Halton Hills. We do Burlington, and we do Oakville. And so each of the regions gets broken down into the three schools, and the three students each give a five-minute speech. And then there's an open question period where any senators, as well as the trustees that aren't running, can ask questions to the candidates. And then there's the election period. And then at the end of the night, we announce the new trustees for the next year. All the senators. I believe each school gets four votes for who they would like to represent each region. So each region gets, each school can vote for every region's trustee.
Thank you. Good luck, Manuela. Good luck, Manuela. 10.2, school educational field trips are attached. Superintendent Nara would be happy to answer any of your questions. Seeing none. North Oakville Preserve Monthly Construction Report. Superintendent Corfaccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you the March 260 report for the North Oakville Preserve School. We're pleased to report that we're still barely hanging on to the schedule, which is very tight, as you all know, and we're hoping that we've only got one or two more days of winter weather, and then we will hopefully have sunny days to finish off the school in time for September. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions trustees may have.
No questions? Thank you. Halton Student Transportation Services Annual Report is attached. Anyone has any questions? Trustee Quinn? Fred would be happy to answer this for you.
I just wanted to verify who sits on this commission on behalf of our board.
I do. Paula does. Paul McMahon. And then the Halton Board has their chair and their director, their business superintendent, and then HSTS staff. Nothing? Attached to the CPIC minutes of March 7, 2016, and the Policy Committee Meeting Minutes of March 29. There's no questions. Attached are four pieces of correspondence, one from Dr. Mornahan approving our modified school year calendar, one from Alessandra May regarding to the pares, neighbors of St. Joseph, Father Louis. No open questions. You don't have to go back in camera. Chloe's absent. Would you like to make a move to excuse her? Trustee Rowe, seconded by Trustee Carabella, all in favor. Thank you. And motion to adjourn. Trustee Quinn, seconded by Trustee Carabella, all in favor. So moved. Trustee Rabenda, so lead us in prayer for closing.
If you could join me, please, in the Hail Mary, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary. For the grace of the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, blessed is the great God in Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and the hour of our redemption.
Our Lady of the Holy Briserry?
Pray for us.
In the name of the Father, and of the Holy Spirit. Thank you. Our audience is diminished. Thank you for hanging to the end.